Great. Okay, good evening, everyone. It's August 29th. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Just as a heads up before we call the meeting to order, we were in executive session. We didn't finish executive session, so we will be returning to executive session after the meeting. I just want to let everybody know publicly. So what I'd like to do, as we always do, is stand to our pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
So as we start every meeting off, we usually have board members give some comments that they'd like to share with the public. So I'm going to start with Danielle today. Are you not ready?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening. I would just like to say I hope you have a great school year moving forward. We're about to embark on yet another journey in our children's career, so hopefully it'll be a good one for everybody.
Thanks. Michelle?
I also wanted to say I wish everyone a very successful upcoming year. I did want to acknowledge all the new families coming into the community and welcome them. I think choosing to live here and to bring your children here is an honor to us as a district, and we thank you for choosing us. I also wanted to welcome all the new faculty. We have a lot of new staff this year. I think that also says something about our community, that thousands and thousands upon applicants who wanted to work here says something about what a special place we are. And just really for all those parents who are bringing, you know, their babies, their kindergartners here, and it doesn't matter if your kid's going to kindergarten or as my baby this year is going to be a senior, it's still hard. So I wish you all the best of luck, a wonderful year ahead. Carl did mention at our last meeting that we'd like to have a bit of a meeting greet at maybe our first meeting in September with our new administrators and some of the new staff, so everyone can meet you publicly and wish you well, and good luck to everyone.
Thanks, Michelle. Dodge?
Just good luck to everyone. Hope everybody's enjoying their summer. It's just about ready to come to an end, and looking forward to getting involved with Cottle again. My little one's going to be starting kindergarten there, so everything's coming full circle. So good luck to everybody.
Rob Seifer is not available tonight, so he sends his apologies, but I think he might be watching, so Rob, if you're out there, hello. Just wanted a couple of things. It's an exciting year for the district. There's a lot of changes. You know, when we look at our board, we have three new board members that are joining us for the first time for this year. New ideas. It's always a nice thing to get some new people on the board. To Michelle's point, there's a lot of new teachers that are coming on board in September, and we want to thank you for choosing Tocco as your home. I think there might be a couple here tonight, so look forward to meeting everyone. New students, it's not only kindergartners. We have some high schoolers that are coming in for the first time, and, you know, I'm wishing everyone luck, not only the little guys, but also the older kids. I know transitions into a new school sometimes could be challenging, and I know this community and the kids in this community will welcome them with open arms, so enjoy your time here. To our seniors, I always think about seniors whenever we start a year. It's an exciting time. I'm four years away. I have a freshman in high school. I'm not looking forward to a senior. I think I might cry every day when she goes to school, but enjoy it. It's a great year. Senior is always a fun time. We look forward to many things that we'll be doing in our senior class this year. The last thing I just want to talk about is two things, is we also have a lot of new administrators on this team. We have a new superintendent, a new assistant superintendent, new athletic director, new business official, new assistant principal, superintendent, assistant principal. There's a lot of new faces. Some have been here and moved into different positions, and some are coming from outside the district. I just ask parents, try to get to meet them, try to get to know them. If you don't already, I know they were all very community outreach. That was one of the things that we looked for. We wanted people that were going to be willing to speak with parents and meet with parents, but be patient with them, you know? And we have people that are in new positions in a new school district, and just like it is when you start a new job, there's sort of like a little, you know, time where you're kind of just trying to get yourself acclimated, and maybe you might not get a response as quickly, or you might not get the response you want when you ask them, but just be patient with them, because I can tell you, in seeing what they've done so far, they're extremely dedicated, and they really want to make this their home. So bear with them. They're going to get it right, and they might make some mistakes along the way, but that's okay. We all make mistakes, is what we learn from them, so I'm looking forward to seeing all their inputs, and especially with Carl, because he's our superintendent. I don't think he'll make any mistakes, but just be patient with him as well. He's got a lot to learn and a lot of things that he's doing for the first time this year, but we have full confidantism as a board. Last thing is safety. You know, we've been out of school now for three or four months, and the first week of school, you have new parents coming in, dropping off kindergartners and first graders, and I just really implore you, especially at Cottle, if you're driving in the neighborhood, slow down, take your time. Your kid's not going to get in trouble if they're five minutes late to Cottle. I'd rather us do this right. There's going to be some bumps in the road. There always is every year in September. We're, you know, hopefully we've avoided them, but if they come up, don't worry, we're listening, we'll fix them. But I think the most important thing is, no matter what the situation is, just take your time and pick up and drop off until people get used to what the system is, because I do think it gets safer as the year goes on, and the first week or two of school is always just chaotic. So please, please be careful, because we want to keep not only the kids safe, but the parents and the administrators and the teachers and everybody involved with this district that are walking through these streets, let's just keep them safe, okay? Thank you, and I'll pass over to Carl.
Sure, sure. Well, Steve touched on this. It has been a busy summer internally and behind the scenes, and first, I want to thank the board. We got together for a full-day retreat back in July and really delved into goal-setting and analyzed what we're doing well, what we could improve upon, and we have right now a draft set of goals for myself as superintendent and for the school board, which we will be presenting to the public on September 19th. That's our opening-of-school-year board meeting, and the board will be asked to adopt the goals at that time. Also, in August, we had a two-day administrators retreat, and as Steve mentioned, we have a lot of new administrators on board, and we have people new to their positions internally, and it was great for us to be together for two full days, really get to know one another. We delved into our five-year strategic plan, which we worked on updating. We are in year four, we're entering year four of a five-year plan, and the plan definitely needed to be revisited, and we have a draft version that also on September 19th, we will share with the Board of Education. Also, in addition to that plan, we worked on goals that were aligned with that plan for each school building and each department throughout the district, so it was very productive. We also had a training for APPR, which is the evaluation system that we use for our teachers and administrators, so I felt it was very productive, and I do believe the administrative team is ready to begin. At the end of summer, there's this special thing that happens in schools, and that is you slowly start to see teachers come in. Sometimes they have their children in tow, and they're cleaning up their classrooms and getting things set for the students, and we have our athletes starting, and there's this steady buildup of excitement, and of course, the custodial staff, I need to comment on how hard they worked all summer. And in my opinion, the building certainly will be ready personnel-wise, program-wise, and of course, facility-wise, and I won't steal Lee's thunder, she's going to speak a little bit more, but everyone on staff here has worked incredibly hard to be ready for September. We look forward to a smooth opening.
Thanks, Carl. I'm now going to ask Lee to give us an update on the finance and facilities session of the meeting.
Sure. And here in the business office, we work really hard in the summer behind the scenes, getting everything prepared for school to start in September. Our purchasing person works all summer to order the books and the supplies that the teachers need. I have to give kudos to her, as well as to Anthony Russo, our facilities coordinator, and all our custodial staff. They've been just working very hard all summer. They clean the buildings, they get them prepared, they've been doing renovations everywhere to prepare for all the new needs of the district. I toured the buildings this week, as well as other weeks, and it's, we're really close to completion, and I know it will all be done by Wednesday in prep for everybody coming in. We're just putting finishing touches on everything. The buildings are looking very good, and we're very excited to move forward and get ready for the new school year.
Thanks, Lee. The next part of the meeting is to recognize the PTA and the Tocco School Foundation. I don't know if there's anyone here representing those organizations, but for new parents that might be watching for the first time, get involved. They're two great organizations. They do a lot of good for our kids and for our teachers. Danielle was a former president of PTA. I don't know if you have anything to update for the PTA?
Well, I know that families should have received an email, maybe a week or so ago, asking you to sign up online to a site called Schoolbee, and just so you all know, because it's something we've really never done before. So the PTA is trying to create almost an online school directory, rather than handwritten lists that go and that need correcting. This way, every family logs on, puts in any number of children that they have, and anyone who has signed on for this, you'll be able to see your child's class. So you can easily send an invitation, an email, or give parent a call and set up a playdate, and even in the middle school and high school, sometimes you lose those numbers after fifth grade, and you're going to want them. So you're not joining the PTA by doing this. You're simply putting your information into an online directory. PTA membership, go out in mail, there'll be tables set up at all the open school nights, so you can join then. The PTA does a lot of wonderful things for the school, children, staff, so we encourage all of you to join.
Thanks, Danielle. And you know, it reminds me of something, Lauren, the alerts that go out that the parents and the community can sign up for, even though they're signed up, they should sign up again, right?
The Blackboard Connect, parents are automatically enrolled.
Okay.
But for community members, there is a link on our website that community members can sign up for.
So please do, if you're part of the community and not part of the, have kids in the school, if you want to learn what's going on in the school. So I'll move on to the next part of the meeting, which is the first recognition of the audience. For those of you who haven't been to meetings before, we allow audience members to come up twice. The first time is to talk about things that are actively on the agenda, and then at the end of the meeting, we give you a chance to come up and talk publicly about anything that might be on your mind. So if there's anyone here who'd like to address the school board, please, about agenda items? Okay, then we will get started to the meeting, and we're going to talk about a couple of things that are old business, so we start the meetings out by just talking about some of the old business things, and the first thing is a facilities update, and I believe, Lee, you were going to give us an update on how we're doing on that.
Sure. The facilities committee met in July this summer to explore the needs of the district in terms of our facilities. We did not meet in August because we thought that too many of the committee would be away, but we have planned for the first week in September to meet again. We'll work with our architects to look at various options that might be available to the district and to see where we might want to go from there, so we'll be updating the Board of Ed very soon on some more specifics.
Great, and thank you to all the community members that have stepped up to join that committee. It's an important one, I think, the results of that facilities meeting and the group that they're coming up with ideas or things that are going to take us in this district into the next 10, 15 years, so there's some needed things we need to do, and they're actively looking at it. The second thing is Sarnoye Boulevard. Is Carl, Michelle?
I think Carl.
Sure, I can start. Michelle, please fill in. So the town of Eastchester has offered verbally to transfer ownership of Sarnoye Boulevard, the park just adjacent to our Cottle field, transfer ownership over to the school district. We, years back, we used to use that portion of the street for students to play during recess and even sometimes during physical education. It's something that we are seriously considering. Our attorneys are in touch with the attorneys from the town of Eastchester. I've spoken with Supervisor Calavita, who has assured me he is supportive of this, if this is something that the school wants and if it makes sense for us. We have our architects send over the surveys to the town, but it is a detailed process. It's not something that you do quickly, but things are moving forward, and I'm pleased with how we're progressing, and we will continue to bring updates to the community. We do encourage anyone with opinions to either, if you'd like to join us at a board meeting or also reach out to any one of us, we're happy to discuss it further, but it is something that I think we need to seriously consider. It would benefit the district tremendously if this is something that can come to fruition.
I would just like to add also, very grateful to the supervisor for keeping this an opportunity for us to work on, but that it is a process transferring a public roadway, and it's going to take some time. So it's just important to know that as of right now, the conditions are the same as they were last year on Sarnoye, and maybe, you know, Steve just mentioned it in his remarks about the safety and the drop-off and the pickup, we could send a Blackboard Connect reminding all the parents of the procedures that are in place now, and I know it goes out in their packets, but I think when they see it as an email, it's just, it's more, you know, something serious to look at and remind everyone, and especially the new parents, what the current drop-off and pickup procedures are, and the traffic flow around the school campus. It's just, you know, safety is really our number-one priority here, so just everyone to please be aware, and as we progress on this transfer and more opportunities open up to us, we'll relook at that. But as of right now, things stand the way they are and have been for the last, I believe, two years now, and it's just important to keep that in mind.
Anyone else want to comment on Sarnoye?
I would just say that, you know, there's a lot of attention being made by Carl, by Michelle. There's been, thank you both for really, I think it's an important thing for the district, and it's just a matter of doing it the right way, but again, it goes back to the original comment. Michelle echoed it, safety, having control of that street, what little ones running across it to go into the field has always been a concern of all of us, so this will be something that we'll seriously consider, protect those kids when they're in and out of school. All right, so we're going to move on to the main part of the meeting. The first item is to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 2-12? Michelle first, second. Danielle, all in favor? Oppose? Great. Number two is to approve the minutes, and that's a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 5th, 2016. Do I have a first?
No, that's in the consent agenda. So you want to go down?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Business of the board.
Yep, business of the board. Number one, accept bids. Resolved, accept a bid from the following lowest responsible bidders for the 2016-2017 school year. Painting bid, Mohegan Park Contractors, Inc., and roofing bid, J Salvatore &amp; Sons, Inc. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Danielle, opposed? Discussion, I should say. All in favor? Number two is to approve a contract. Resolved to approve a contract with Symmetry Physical Therapy Services for $34 per hour for the 30 hours per week for 44 weeks, not to exceed $46,000 for the 2016-2017 school year. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Number three, approve consultation services. Resolved to approve a proposal from the Carbone Clinic for classroom consultation services for the period of September 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, at a rate of $1,500 per day, not to exceed $15,000. There was no such proposal in 1516. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Danielle, discussion? All in favor? Approve an agreement, is number four, in business of the board. Resolved to approve an agreement with Hartzong, Inc., for creative arts therapies for the 2016-2017 school year rate, at a rate of $120 per 45-minute session, not to exceed $8,000. Again, in 1516, we did not have such a service. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Danielle, discussion?
This is replacing art and music for the students.
That's correct. Dr. McDonald, you want to speak to this, special education?
Yeah, the Hartzong is new for us because we have a new program. So yeah, this would be for the art and music services for our new K through 2 autistic program at Cottle.
Thanks. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Okay. Approve a transportation contract. Whereas the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District solicited bids through Southern Westchester BOSI's on behalf of the BEP Consortium of School Districts for private schools, special education, and out-of-district school transportation commencing September 1st, 2016, and whereas, after reviewing the bids received, the BEP Consortium determined the lowest responsible bidder was Montauk Student Transport LLC, and whereas, it is in the best interest of the Tocco Union Free School District and consistent with the requirements of the New York State Education Law and the regulations of the Commissioner of Education to award a one-year contract to Montauk Student Transport LLC. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby awards a one-year contract to Montauk Student Transportation LLC for private schools, special education, and out-of-district school transportation commencing on September 1st, 2016 pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the bid documents and response for the first bid year. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Approve a consultant. Resolved that the Board of Education of Tocco Union School Free District hereby appoints Dr. Linda S. Ochsner as a consultant to the school district to perform services as determined by the Superintendent of Schools as an independent contractor pursuant to an agreement drafted by the school district attorneys to commence upon the full execution of said agreement and to end no later than October 31st, 2016, and be it further resolved that the rate of compensation for the services to be provided to the school district by Dr. Ochsner shall be $1,000 per day, not to exceed 10 days of such service to the school district. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Danielle, discussion? All in favor? Okay, we're going to move to the personnel section, not session. Appoint an elementary teacher. So, resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Marissa Frashanti? Did I say that right? Okay. To a three-year probationary appointment as a teacher of elementary in elementary tenure area commencing September 1st, 2016, and ending August 31st, 2019 contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of the Educational Law Sections 3012, comma 3012-C, and/or 3012-D on a Step 5 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Mrs. Frashanti holds professional certification and childhood education's grades 1 through 6. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Michelle, discussion?
Just that Ms. Frashanti went through a very rigorous and competitive process and emerged as our first choice of a candidate for this position. We think she's going to do really well here. She's familiar with our community, and I think will do great work.
Great.
Welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, now we have to vote. All in favor? Oppose? Welcome.
Good luck to you, Marissa.
Welcome. Good luck.
Number three on the personnel agenda is to accept a resignation. Number two, I'm sorry. I see Lauren's little tag, and then I go to the next one. Accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Allison LaRae as a teacher assistant effective August 16, 2016. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Danielle, discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Number three, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Carol Donnelly as a teacher assistant effective August 19th, 2016. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Dodge, discussion?
I need to say Carol Donnelly's been a part of the Tocco school community for many, many years, and we are so happy for her. Of course, we're sad to see her resign, but she is accepting a teacher's position, and she's just a great person, big supporter of the school, so Carol, if you're out there listening, wish you all the best.
Congratulations, Carol. Anybody else? All in favor? Number four, increase a teacher. Resolved to increase the teaching load of Lucille Anzalone by .2 FTE effective September 6, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Number five, increase a teacher. Resolved to increase the teaching load of Andrew Colasano by .08 FTE effective September 6, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Danielle, discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Number six, increase a teacher. Resolved to increase the teaching load of Danielle Dwyer by .2 FTE effective September 6, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 as a compensation as per the TTA contract. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Number seven, increase a teacher. Resolved to increase the teaching load of Stacy Alicio by .2 FTE effective September 6, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Number eight, appoint a leave replacement. Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Joseph Tollis to a 22-week leave replacement at the position of guidance counselor at Tocco High School effective October 5th, 2016 through March 3rd, 2017, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education at a Step 6 MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Oh, I'm sorry.
And so, Joseph, just a quick, brief introduction, but our good fortune, we have one of our high school guidance counselors will be, is planning a maternity leave, and Joseph recently retired from a very prestigious district out on Long Island where he was for quite some time, and his references were just outstanding. He's done everything, the college process, he's a top-notch high school guidance counselor, and we are very fortunate to have him here. He will be transitioning with Ms. Perillo for several days upfront to make sure there's a smooth transition and all our students are well taken care of, because we've come a long way, as I told you, Joseph, with the college process, and we don't want to slip at all, and I know you will do a great job in keeping us moving forward, so welcome.
Welcome. Good luck.
Welcome.
Okay. Number nine, appoint a leave replacement. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Taylor Reno to a 13-week leave replacement at the position of art teacher at Tocco High School effective September 21st, 2016 through December 23rd, 2016, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education on a Step 1 MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Do I have a motion? Michelle, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Danielle, discussion? All in favor? Number 10, appoint a teacher. Okay. Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Caitlin DeSimone to a four-year probationary appointment as teacher of reading and special education in the elementary and special education tenure areas commencing September 1st, 2016, and ending August 31st, 2020 contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of the Educational Law Sections 3012, 3012-C, and/or 3012-D on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. DeSimone holds initial certifications in literacy, birth through grade 6, early childhood education, birth through 2nd, and students with disabilities, grades 1 through 6. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, call, discussion?
Just that Caitlin is here this evening. We're happy to have her here. She went through also a very rigorous process headed up by Dr. McDonald and with input from Cottle administration, and she emerged as our first choice and a candidate, and I think we're fortunate to have her, and she'll do great work down at Cottle. Welcome.
Okay, well, we have to vote first. So all in favor? Great. Oppose? Welcome, Caitlin.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Number 12, appoint a teaching assistant. Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Jenna McKenna? Did I skip one? Sorry, guys. I keep looking at the arrow thinking, again, I did it. There's an arrow next to it. Number 11, appoint a .6 FTE teacher. Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Jaclyn Tripodi to a .6 FTE temporary appointment in the area of speech at William E. Coddle School effective September 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 on a Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Tripodi holds speech and language disability professional certifications. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Dodge, discussion?
Sure. Jaclyn comes to us, again, very highly recommended. She worked at Easter Seals, as well as with outside service providers. She has a good, really solid range of experience. She'll be serving primarily our special education children at the primary grade levels, but she will also be working closely with Vanessa Nastri, our veteran speech therapist at Coddle, and I believe she's going to be a great addition to the Coddle staff, so welcome.
Welcome. So, do, all in favor? Always get thrown off here. Oppose? Okay, great. Okay, number 12, I'm sure this is the right one. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Jenna McKenna to a teaching assistant appointment effective September 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2020 as a teacher assistant at Tocco High School on a Step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Number 13, appoint a teaching assistant. Resolved on recommendation of the Super Schools to appoint Pia Vicario to a teacher assistant appointment effective September 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2020 as a teacher assistant at the William E. Coddle School on a Step 6 of the CSEA salary schedule. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Okay, so that takes us through our agenda and brings us to our second recognition of the audience. At this point, we invite anyone to come up to talk about anything that's not on the current agenda. Okay, there's no one, so then we adjourn the meeting, and what I would say is that we will be heading back to executive session, but I want to thank everybody for coming. Welcome to our new teachers, and I look forward to seeing you all at the next meeting. Have a great beginning of the school year.
May I? Sure. New teacher orientation tomorrow, so hopefully you'll all be there, we'll see you bright and early.
So not too much partying tonight. Good night, everyone.